Good evening, everyone. Could everyone please take their seats?
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. We're going to get started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 31, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Ms. Allen. Here. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present.
President Fox.
Here. Okay, moving on, could you please read the notice of adequate -- oh, closed session and a pledge allegiance, right? All right, everyone can stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're ready for the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed session meeting minutes of February 15?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President.
And you're free to take your mask off while you speak if you like. We're going to just to let everyone know, we're going to go back to the old rules, which are masks on except when you're up at the dais or the microphone. You can take your mask off to speak.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for coming. The Summit Police Department is accepting applications for its 2022 Summer Youth Academy now through April 1st. The two one-week sessions will be held from July 18th to July 22nd and July 25th to July 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. daily, and are open to children ages 11 to 14. The idea behind the program is for young citizens to develop an understanding of the role of the police officer in the community and have a fun time learning about police work and making new friends. And I can tell you, the four years when we had the police academy, much of it happens in the atrium and here, and then they're out at the actual police academy, these kids have a blast. It's -- and I've missed it sorely the last two years, but so I look forward to it, and the kids, it's first preferences for children who are first-time attenders, but they're often those who want to come back to do a second stint, but obviously preferences for those who want to apply for the first time. Summit Police Department trading cards. The popular Summit Police Department trading cards program is back. Kids can collect all 56 trading cards from police officers and civilian staff that they meet around town until May 31st. Cards are also available at the police records window at City Hall, which is right down by the atrium. When children in PK through 5th grade collect 20 or more cards, they can enter a raffle to be held in June. The more cards they collect, the more chances they will be given to enter. I hope you have fun collecting the trading cards. I'm certainly enjoying giving out my cards to the boys and girls that I meet. And lastly, on Thursday, February 24th, there were four attempts between 4:00 p.m. and midnight to enter motor vehicles in Summit. All four vehicles were parked in driveways. Suspects tried to enter the vehicles, but all were locked with no key fobs nearby. Suspects fled when unable to gain entry to the vehicles. Thank you to everyone who has taken the necessary step to secure your vehicles when they are parked. That vigilance, along with increased targeted police patrols, is making a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to the city administrator, Michael Rogers, for his report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just two points tonight. Face coverings in city locations, as the spread of the COVID-19 virus lessens throughout the region, the City of Summit is following updated State of New Jersey guidance for face coverings in the workplace. So beginning on March 7th, this coming Monday, city employees will no longer be required to wear a mask or remain six feet apart from others while working. If they choose, an employee may continue to follow masking and physical distancing protocols. Mask wearing in city location will also be optional for members of the public. And then just the last item, municipal budget. At the common council meeting on Tuesday, April 5th, I will present presenting the 2022 municipal budget, which is always an exciting council meeting.
Best meeting of the year.
Best meeting of the year, yes. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you. And then I have a couple of things. So following on to the changes in the mask rules for City Hall, starting at our next meeting, Tuesday, March 15th, assuming that COVID transmission rates remain low, face coverings will be optional at council meetings. While masks will no longer be required, anyone who would like to wear a mask should continue to do so. And, let's see, Broad Street West. Last week, the governing body shared a message to the community that is now posted on the city website at cityofsummit.org/ESW. It was written to answer questions raised at recent meetings about Broad Street West redevelopment. If you've not read the letter, I encourage you to do so. And then finally, opening day of the 2022 season at the municipal golf course is Friday, April 1st, and registration is now open for Summit residents and a limited number of non-residents. For more information or to register, go to summitcommunityprograms.com. So with that, we will move on to -- we are not going to be doing the ceremonial award that's been put off till the 15th of March, so we will be moving on to our presentation. And this evening, we have Dr. Robert Powell, Jr., who is the Managing Director of NASA Capital Advisors, and he's our financial advisor for the Broad Street West redevelopment. And he will be coming up to do a presentation about the project and the finances. So thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate the opportunity to take my mask off as well briefly.
You might want to move the mic a little closer to your face, so --
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that good?
A little higher even, maybe?
Yeah. Okay.
Even better.
Great.
Terrific.
Let me begin by just giving you a brief background about what we're -- about history, what we're trying to do here tonight. The Broad Street West redevelopment project has been in the planning stages, as you know, in the city for probably a year and a half, and we are at the critical stage of putting together not only the real estate and planning components of the project, but also the financial components, because it's not just a real estate project, it's also a financial transaction between Summit and the real estate developer. It is, in my considerable experience in doing redevelopment projects in New Jersey, one of the most extraordinary public-private partnerships that I have had the opportunity to work on. And we'll talk about what that means in the course of this presentation. Let me give you a brief background, first of all, about who I am and why I'm here tonight talking to you as something of an expert. I have advanced graduate training from Princeton University in economics and public policy. Early on in my career, I was the Executive Director of the New Jersey Economic Development Authority in Trenton, which is the state's investment bank for real estate development. Subsequent to that, I had a 25-year active career as a developer of real estate throughout New Jersey as a principal, and I still do occasional development as a principal. But our company now serves as financial advisor to public and private agencies in the focus on real estate finance and development throughout New Jersey. We have represented probably hundreds of clients, both public and private, in doing complicated projects similar to what we're going to be talking about tonight. We have put together, for your visual assistance, a slideshow that will walk us through what we think is -- are the key elements of this project, and I will, as we go through them, just highlight some of the key things that I think they represent. So let me start with a brief description of the project. What is being proposed here on the city property downtown is a development that will consist of 140 rental apartments. Those apartments will be a mixture of sizes, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. It will also be a mixture of incomes and tenant eligibility. So 112 of the 140 units will be what are called market rate apartments. The developer will be charging the market rates of rent, and we'll be talking a little bit about that in a moment. Seven of the units will be something rather unusual in New Jersey redevelopment right now, which are called workforce housing. They are not technically, under COA standards, affordable housing, but they are certainly not market rate. And the idea here is to create a group of apartments in this project that will get what we call workforce families, who aren't poor and they aren't wealthy, they're somewhere in the middle. And the definition of somewhere in the middle would be families that are making no more than 120% of the median income in Union County. Then the balance of the apartments, or 21 of them, will be what we call affordable. And they are affordable under the definition of the Mount Laurel and COA standards, low and moderate income persons. And we're going to be talking a little bit about what that means statistically in just a moment.
Excuse me, Dr. Powell, would you mind staying a little closer to the mic so that folks at home can hear you? Sorry.
That's -- I appreciate you telling me that. The affordable units, by the way, as you see here, are an important component for the city to utilize in satisfying its third-round obligations under the Mount Laurel dictum. The other piece of the project is -- will include 10,000 square feet of retail space at the ground level. Let me just briefly give you a visual overview of the project before we start crunching numbers. This is the concept plan. You can see Broad Street at the top. The project is basically running along the intersection of Cedar at Broad Street. Here's another elevation of the building. It's one building, five stories, as you see here, with a lot of landscaping and plaza treatment around the edges. This is the view, a perspective from Broad and Cedar, and another view from Broad Street. I'm not sure I mentioned, but the developer of this project is a joint venture that consists of Toll Brothers Rental Apartment Housing Group and a group called L&amp;M Partners, both of which I've had extensive experience working with. They're extraordinarily capable, well-financed, and competent developers, and I think you've -- you're fortunate to have a team like that that's doing this project. Here's another elevation. A quick set of comments about the affordable housing units that are in the building. Many of you on the front of the room here, I'm sure, have become experts in affordable housing by necessity, but folks here in the audience and at home may not fully understand what it means to have affordable housing units in a project like this. The way the process works is that the 21 units that will be considered affordable will be restricted to families that have less than a certain income, as defined by where they are in the income stack between 35% of median and 60% of median. You see here the incomes that a family of one, two, three, or four persons can earn to fit into one of those categories. So for example, a family of three, that's 35% of median or lower, which is considered very low income, can't have an income of more than $33,000. The other income -- so this gives you a sense of the family incomes of the families and tenants that will occupy the affordable units. Briefly, the way those tenants are selected is that they're not picked by the developer. These units will be subject to administration by the city's administrative agent. There's an agency that handles your affordable housing matters. The units will be advertised, one built, for applicants who think they would like to live in one of the units. They will submit applications. The applications will include a requirement for income statements, tax returns, other forms of financial evidence that they are capable of paying the rent. And as is often the case, there will be more applications than there are units. So that will often lead to a lottery that, again, is not run by the developer. That's run by your administrative agent. And there are a whole bunch of other rules and regulations that are designed to make this a fair process for the affordable families. And the result will be that the building will have a rich mix of incomes in it. The rents that you see here for the affordable units are going to range from 800 a month to probably 1,500 a month. A two-bedroom market rate apartment in this project, we project, will probably rent for 3,800 a month. So you're going to have quite a spread, which is the whole point. A mixed-income project that will serve not just the higher-income tenants in the area, will also provide a diversity of opportunity, as Mount Laurel has intended. With that brief background about what the project looks like and how the affordable process works, let's turn briefly to the financial structure of the agreement between the developer and the town and the city that's being negotiated. And the first thing I want to briefly review with you is what a pilot agreement is. That's a term that I assume folks have heard a little bit about in connection with this project, so let me go through a couple of basics. The legislature has passed a law 30 years ago now, a long-term tax exemption law, which permits towns at its discretion to provide tax abatement for certain kinds of redevelopment projects. It does not give a developer the right to a pilot. There is no right to a pilot in New Jersey. It's entirely within the discretion of a municipality as to whether it provides a pilot, but it has that right under this statute. Pilot agreements essentially are designed to facilitate public-private partnerships that have higher costs for the developer than many projects would have if they weren't public-private partnerships. And we're going to go into some of those higher costs in this case in a few minutes, but they include, obviously, the affordable housing and a few other design features that have been negotiated into this project that the developer probably wouldn't be doing but for the pilot. The pilot is a financial incentive that has attracted private investment to hundreds and hundreds of projects throughout towns in New Jersey, just like Summit. The way the pilot works is as follows. There's a financial agreement between the town and the developer. It's called a financial agreement. And once the financial agreement becomes effective and the project is built and goes into operation, the project and the site of the project come off the tax rolls. They are treated -- it is treated as tax-exempt property, technically, as if it had been acquired by a school or a church. In lieu of paying real estate taxes under the financial agreement, the developer will make payments in lieu of taxes, which is the acronym PILOT, for up to 30 years, and the payment schedule is a percentage of what are called annual gross revenues of the project. It's actually a simple standard compared to most state statutes, because annual gross revenues, in this case for an apartment building, means the top line, the gross revenues. No deductions for operating costs, no deductions for salaries, insurance, repairs, and maintenance. It's your gross rents, your parking fees, any other fees you get, that's the annual gross revenues. So it's easy to audit, it's hard to cheat, and by the way, a financial agreement will require annually an audit that the city will get independently that will confirm that the annual gross revenues on which the pilot payments the prior year were calculated are correct. Pilot payments are made quarterly, just like taxes are, and if a developer doesn't make pilot payments per the agreement, the result is the same as not paying your taxes. The city has the ability to put a lien on the property, which is the equivalent of a tax lien. So I'm not aware, frankly, of very many pilot projects that have had defaults, because it's -- the results for the developer are very unpleasant. The payments that are received under a pilot agreement are distributed differently than real estate taxes. In Summit, you collect taxes, the city gets about 19 or 20%, the Board of Ed gets a chunk, the county gets a chunk. Under the pilot statute that we referenced earlier, the split is a little simpler. It's 95% of the revenues go to the municipality, and 5% go to the county. And we'll get into the -- what that number -- what those numbers mean for this project in just a minute. Now, as if we don't have enough acronyms here, there's another feature to this project that makes it even more interesting and creative and actually has created even more value for the city as a consequence, and that is, the proposed agreement will not only include a pilot arrangement, but something called a redevelopment area bond. That's also enabled by the same statute that I referenced earlier, the state statute. The justification for a redevelopment area bond -- let me say what a bond is. The redevelopment area bond is a bond issue that a municipality will issue. In the case of Summit, it would issue a bond. Someone will buy the bond. The proceeds of the bond will be used to pay for a portion of the cost of this redevelopment Unlike most bonds that towns issue, however, a redevelopment area bond is not a general obligation of the city. It's a revenue bond, which means the only security behind that bond is going to be a portion of the pilot revenue that the developer is paying. We will show you the numbers, and I'll show you the numbers in just a minute, but generally speaking, the pilot in this case is going to be generating an average of about $600,000 a year to the city. A RAB bond that we're going to talk about in a minute will require about $100,000 of that $600,000 a pilot, and as a result of that, there will be another $1.7 million of capital available to pay for certain costs in this project that serve a public purpose but that can't be put inside the four corners of the project financing that the developer's doing. It would make the project not feasible. So essentially, the RAB bond is providing an additional source of capital to pay for a portion of the project. When I say additional, in addition to the developer's equity and the developer's mortgage loan. Those are the only two sources the developer can bring to the table, his equity, and he borrows money from an insurance company or a bank. The additional source of capital that a RAB provides will allow the project to have features that you'll see later, I think, in my opinion, do serve a public purpose, but which couldn't be included in the project but for the RAB bond. That's what a RAB bond is, and we'll get into the details again in just a minute. So let's back up a minute. I said a minute ago that the statute that the state has passed does not make a pilot as of right to a developer. The process everywhere in New Jersey works this way. The developer has to come forward and say, "I'm going to do a redevelopment project. Here are my numbers. I can't make them work if I have to pay full taxes. The costs are too high, maybe your taxes are too high, or some combination of the two. The numbers just don't work." So the developer has to make an application and make a case to the municipality that but for the pilot, the project won't be built, can't be built, and is not financially feasible. That's where I come in, where our company comes in, to look at the numbers that the developer's put together, do a very deep financial analysis of the project. And when I say deep, construction costs, hard costs, soft costs, architect, engineering, site work, we look at the proposed rents, and we validate them in terms of our own market research. We look at the proposed financing plan that the developer's put together. They're always going to borrow some money from a bank. Sometimes the developer will say, "I'm going to get a long-term mortgage, and I'm going to have to pay a 6% interest on it." And we will often say right now, "Well, that's -- you're not a very competitive -- you're using a not a very competitive mortgage tool, because you can borrow right now for around 4%. And the lower the interest rate, the more money you can borrow, and the less of a pilot you'll need." We do that kind of analysis as part for the municipality in this case to determine independently whether we believe that at full taxes, the project can't be successful. That process, in this case, went forward over a period of, I don't know, four or five months with the developer, and we were dealing with pretty sophisticated people on the other side. And I think we came to the right understanding on all the key issues of cost, rents, financing, and arrived at a model that we've put together, that we've presented to your team, your staff, that concluded that if the project were built in the absence of a pilot, jumping ahead, without a pilot and at full taxes, our analysis indicated that the developer would need to invest over $23 million of equity in the project, and the return on that equity, and this is going to get a little wonkish, but I'll explain what I'm talking about in just a minute, the return on equity, we measured at about 7.5%. Think about that calculation as a simple investment decision. Suppose each of us had $23 million to invest, wonderful set of assumptions, and you're in the real estate business, and you have a lot of choices, and especially this particular development team, L&amp;M and Toll, are national developers, very busy, very active, and have access to billions of dollars worth of capital. The primary basis on which they make a decision as to where to put the next chunk of money is that number, 7.5%. It's too low. The short answer is, it's too low to justify the risks involved in the project, and it's also too low because there are redevelopment projects and commercial real estate projects that are going forward right now that generate returns that are at least double that. So that's where you're going to put your money. What we have to decide as your advisor is what is the sweet spot? I've concluded that that's too low, and if the project can't get a pilot, I have said to your colleagues that I'm working with, the project, in my opinion, will not get built. It just won't get built. At least it won't get built with the features that you would like to see in the project, which we'll talk about in a minute, including the affordable housing and the enhancements to the neighborhoods and the parks and that sort of thing. So the next stage of our analysis is to say, "Well, what will it take to get that internal rate of return up to a level that will attract 20-some million dollars of capital?" million dollars of capital? The reason, by the way, that the returns were too low, among other reasons, were the various non-revenue producing elements of the project that were pulling down the rate of return. We talked earlier about the affordable housing. The affordable housing units, the 21 affordable housing units don't make any money, but they cost almost as much to build as the market rate units. There are some other things in the project that may not be as obvious to you, but as you get into it, and maybe in further meetings, we can explain it in more detail, that pull down the developer's return. There's an existing firehouse on the site. We've said to the developer, we want you to take it down once it's empty. We don't want to demolish it because it's expensive to demolish the building. The site has some environmental issues. They're not horrific, but there's some historic fill there that's going to require some remediation. There's a pesky, large PSENG underground gas main that runs right through your property. You can't build a five-story building on top of that. You got to relocate it. PSENG just won't let you do that. Relocating that is $750,000, just that one thing. And then if you look at, my pointer here is a little weak, the Cedar Street, Broad Street and Public Space features of this project, which may or may not have been provided or discussed earlier. I haven't, I don't have all the graphics on those. But the, the project is not just the big building that we saw. It's a series of public spaces and streetscapes that have elevated the feel and quality of Broad Street, Cedar Street, and in the three cases of plazas at the bottom, they are gathering places for people in that neighborhood to congregate. And they're expensive. Those, those public spaces probably together are about $1,003,000 of additional cost. They don't generate any revenue to the developer. So what we have put together and recommended for your consideration is a pilot agreement with a RAB that will allow for a lot of different competing priorities to be satisfied. Number one, we want the developer to be incentivized to invest over $20 million on the project and feel like he's going to get a decent return. But we also have the city's priorities that we just summarized there, the affordable housing and the landscaping and the public parks that we also want to have included in the project. And as we, by the way, a little later, the other thing we'd like to get is a very nice price for your land when they close and buy. We're going to talk about that in a minute. To achieve all of those financial objectives, I concluded that with a 10% pilot rate instead of full taxes, 10% of annual gross revenues and the RAB that we'll talk about, the developer can earn a return of 11.37%. The range of acceptable returns for this type of project, in my professional experience, is between 10 and 15%. So this is in the range of acceptable. It's in the low range. I am confident that there's no excess profit built into this project. This is a tight deal. It's a tight deal. One of the reasons that the developer has agreed to go forward with this level of return, however, and I say this charitably, is that it's Summit. It's not as risky a market as some others whose names I won't mention, where a lot of development's going on right now. The apartments will rent for slightly higher rents. There will be far less vacancy because folks would like to live in Summit. And the opportunities to do that are limited, as you know. The supply of this kind of housing is limited everywhere in New Jersey, including Summit. All of those factors, those market factors, tend to reduce the risk and therefore allow the developer to put money in and accept a slightly lower return. So the project that we were talking, the financial agreement we're talking about now would have a 10% pilot rate with a RAB bond. And here is a summary of what the financial results of that transaction would be for the city. Your, in the first year, the first year after the project's built, when the pilot first kicks in, Summit's share of the pilot would be $528,000, as you see at the top. Over 30 years, our experience has indicated that that pilot rate is going to go up about 2% a year. And why do I say that? The pilot rate goes up for only one reason, rents go up. I think it's conservative, 2% escalation, but we didn't want to get carried away with the forecast. Right now, rents in Class A apartments in New Jersey, as we come out of the pandemic, have been going up 3% to 5%. That's Class A. Who knows? 30 years is a long time. But even at a 2% inflation, your average pilot payment over the 30 years will be $700,000. You're also going to get a $14,000 a year administrative fee, which you, you get that under the statute because you're administering the pilot. Then we get to the deductions from the pilot payments. So if you go over here to this number, $1,750,000, we have structured this RAB bond to be paid for out of $100,000 a year of pilot revenues. $100,000 a year will pay the debt service on a RAB bond of $1,750,000. The assumption here is a 4% interest rate on that bond and a 30-year amortization. That's subject to change and negotiation as we go forward. I think it's a little conservative, but the interest rate's a little, little high. But it's a great placeholder because it gives us a sense of what gross revenue comes in under the pilot, what's taken back from the RAB bond, and then what's left over for the city, which is an average annual net pilot revenue of $619,000. So assuming that we can put this together as I have described it in an overview, what have we done that serves a public purpose in Summit? The first thing we've done will have been to take your current property, which is hugely underutilized as a real estate asset and a ratable, and turned it into a income generating asset that will generate not only pilot revenues, but I'm not sure I mentioned, in the agreement we have with the developer, they have agreed to pay the city $8 million for your site in addition to the pilot revenues. If the subject were, if the project were subject to full taxes, and this is a very hypothetical, but it's, it's important to just see the difference here. If the project were hypothetically, could be built at, under full tax assumptions, the city's 19 or 20% share of the full taxes would generate about $7.3 million in taxes over 30 years. But that is really hypothetical because I've said before, and I'm quite convinced that this is true, the project wouldn't get built if full taxes were levied on it. But just to be clear, that would be your revenue at the city with full taxes. The pilot payments over the 30 years are over $18 million, or twice as much. On a site that's right now, I think, just with the one building on, I think it's generating about $16,000 a year or something.
It's about, about $30,000 total.
$30,000.
$6,000 to the municipality.
The municipality, right. In addition, I said the additional revenue, the additional benefits will be an $8 million sale proceeds to the city. And in addition to all that, you're going to have the affordable housing and the streetscapes that we talked about earlier, streetscape improvements. One final thing I wanted to just review with you briefly, going back to the $8 million purchase price that we've negotiated, is a question that I think some folks have been asking, which is what if we didn't go through all of the complexity of this redevelopment process and we just put our property on the market? Just said, put a sign for sale, the developers come in, we're taking bids, here it is, what will you offer us? We ran a rather careful analysis of that question as if we were one of the development firms that were interested in buying your site, as is. No redevelopment plan, no pilot, no requirements to do anything other than what your current zoning permits, what your current zoning permits, the underlying zoning. The underlying zoning allows between 40 and 54 apartments to be built on your site, as opposed to the 140 that can be built under the redevelopment plan. The, the range of densities that you see here depends upon whether the developer goes for some bonus densities such as surface parking and lead standards or none of the above. But in all three of the cases, in my opinion, with the underlying zoning in place, I cannot find a justification for a developer paying $2 million for your property. The highest price I can come up with is the, is the one in the middle, which is the $1,008,000. The, the alternative, as we just went through a moment ago, is a redevelopment plan, a little more complicated, more density for the developer, but more responsibility for the developer to do some other things that the city would like to have done, and a tax abatement. So there's one final point I want to make before I sit down and take some questions. I know Summit, like all the towns that I'm working with, cares about the impact that development's having on its public schools. We have done, at the request of your team, a deep analysis of the public school impact of this particular project. I'm expecting over the next week or two that the full report that we've done will be available to Michael and would be available on, on the website to see all the details and assumptions. We, we do a lot of school impact analyses using the best data that we think is available from the American Community Survey, independent data. And based on that analysis, our conclusion is that this project is likely to generate 24 public school age children. Now, the public school age children, as it may suggest, is designed to rule out private school kids and at home school, homeschool kids, just public school age children. The distribution of those kids is described here. Most of them will be the elementary grades, K through 5, not unusual, because this is not a family-friendly project frankly for a family that has a couple of high school kids in the apartment. So most of the kids will be headed to the elementary level, but a few will be in middle and, and upper school. What does that mean? 24 kids, you may think is a lot, you may think is not a lot. The real answer to the question of what it means is what is the capacity of the school system and what has been the recent trend in enrollment in the Summit public schools? We've looked at that pretty carefully. Over the last 10 years, the enrollment in your public schools has been flat to slightly declining. You have 3,757 students in the, in the, in the system in 2021. Over the last 10 years, that number had been as high as 3935, 3976. It's now down to 3,757. The 24 projected new students is roughly 6/10ths of 1% of your current enrollment. If you spread the 24 kids among the grades that we said they would be heading to, it's probably one or two kids per grade level at most. In my opinion, and we do a lot of analysis like this with many other school districts, I do not believe that the project is going to place a financial burden on the Summit public schools. So with that final point and my gratitude for your attention, I'm happy to take some questions and have some discussion.
Great, thank you so much. So I'm going to open it up first to members of council to ask questions. If you'd like to sit at the table, you're welcome to do that if that's more comfortable for you. Okay.
Is the mic, is the mic is working?
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to ask members of council if they have questions first and then I'll open it up to members of the public. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Powell. That was a fantastic presentation, easily understood for the layman like, for a layman like me. You did mention one word that piqued my interest and, and that was risks. And Summit is a, not as risky as other, other towns. But what risks are you foreseeing with a project of this magnitude?
For the developer?
For everybody, for us too.
Well, I think, I think your risks, your risk is that the project doesn't get built or fails or goes into bankruptcy. And so you don't get your $8 million or something financial, you don't get the pile revenues, you don't get the affordable housing, you don't get the enhancements. I'm, I'm not really, if you ask me what the risks are, I focus mostly on the developer risk. Because that's, you, you made a, you're making a partnership with a developer. And all these benefits depend on the developer executing the project. There are two or three things in the real world that could push this project sideways over the next three to five years. One would be huge recession that would just shut down the rental market and blow interest rates sky high. And the other would be a sharp, continually sharp spike in construction costs. I can't, the construction cost risk is already starting to abate in a material way. There was panic in the, in the trades a year and a half ago with construction prices. They have calmed down now. Supply chain issues have been, starting to get resolved. The question of a recession is, is, is something that we all have crystal balls that can look at and figure out. I don't think, if, if you were dealing with a smaller developer that had very little experience and no balance sheet, I'd be way more concerned about risk. LNM Partners, which is part of this, this group, taps all the major pension funds in the world for capital that have a sector set aside for real estate. And, and that's not going to go away. Real estate's going to be a favored sector for all institutional investors for the foreseeable future because it's a good business to be in. Toll Brothers is, as you know, a publicly traded New York Stock Exchange company with a tremendous record of achievement financially and market-wise. That, both of these companies have weathered the Great Recession of '08, the blip that we just had with coronavirus. While I'm not in the business of making predictions about these things, I, I don't think that Summit faces a material risk in, in this project being successful. That's my bottom line conclusion. All the indicators to me are very positive, largely because of the team you've put together to do the project.
Thank you. And then just one more thing, because we're counting on them as a partner. What if they sell this property five years from now?
They are going to be allowed to sell it only after it's built and it, and it's completed. They are going to be allowed to sell it only after it's built and it's completed. That's standard procedure in the redevelopment agreements, that they can't sell it until they have delivered the project and rented it up. If they sell it, somebody else is going to step in and pay them a substantial amount of money, and the project will go forward. I don't, I mean, somebody else may run it, but I mean...
And assume all the pilot agreement?
Oh, they have to assume all the pilot, all the pilot agreements and all the redevelopment standards exactly. All the affordable housing requirements will have to be assumed as part of that acquisition.
Yep. That's it for now.
Any other questions from members of council?
Wow.
Okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, thank you for the presentation. It was really very clear. And I have two questions that I would like to kind of relay from what I've heard from the public so far, that I think you, I'm hoping maybe you know. The likelihood that the developer or the pilot would be below 30 years, is that something that was ever considered? And what would that do to the project?
The question was, did we consider having a pilot agreement for a term of less than 30 years? I guess it was considered, but frankly, if you look at the benefits that the pilot is generating for the city, and it also generates, continues to generate a high value for the project for the whole 30-year period, I guess what would happen is if the pilot were to terminate at the end of 20 years, there would be some disruption in the net operating income of the project. The expenses would go up sharply. That first jump would be probably a 30%, increase in taxes, and that would then make it hard for the developer, five or six years before that, to refinance the project, because the lenders are going to know that the cash flow is going to drop in five or six years. So it's going to, it would, it's laying a couple of landmines inside the financial structure of the project that could go off over the next 20, 30 years, that would not be helpful for the stability of the project. So I think it was part of our negotiation, our horse trading, if you will, and in a good sense of the word, to extend the pilot for the full term that's permitted by law, in return for which the developer has really reached pretty hard to accommodate the things that the city wanted.
Okay. Thank you. And then one more is, do you know the distribution of the apartments? So one, two-bedroom, three-bedroom with den, I saw up there, and three-bedroom?
Yes, there are, I can give you the exact numbers if you're interested. So let's start with the market rate apartments. There are 15 studios that are 619 square feet. There are 14 one-bedrooms and another 33 one-bedroom and den, 774 and 913 square feet. There are 37 two-bedrooms, nine two-bedroom and dens, and then three, I'm sorry, four The affordable units are all one, two, and three, I'm sorry, they're two-studio, but they're counted as one-bedrooms. So there are four one-bedroom co-appartments, affordable apartments, four one-bedrooms, 11 two-bedrooms, and three three-bedrooms. And then the seven workforce housing units are all one-bedroom.
Thank you very much. That was a common question I heard, so I appreciate it.
Is that all you have, Councilmember Meneger?
That is, thank you.
Councilmember Little?
Thank you.
Sure.
Alan.
Not Little, I'm sorry, Alan.
No, it's all right.
I'm just looking over.
Yep, no, no, that's fine. Thank you, Council President. Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. It was chock-full of information, so I'm going to try and articulate this as easily as possible. So my understanding is that the years of the pilot will end at 30 years, right?
Yes.
And that the percentage of revenue from the pilot is 10%?
That's the percentage of annual gross revenues that will create the pilot payments. That's how you calculate how many dollars the pilot payments will be.
Okay.
10% of annual gross revenues.
And when does that 10% kick in?
Upon the issuance of a certificative occupancy and the first apartment being occupied.
Okay. And to Councilmember Meneger's question, the 20-year pilot, have you worked on any deals that have had a 20-year pilot?
A few, yeah, a few. I mean, it was, they, the decision in all of those cases was made for reasons that had nothing to do with finance or economics or sound planning, but rather, in the case of one or two particular governing bodies, having to deal with a public reaction to the pilot that was, A, not rational, but B, pretty strong. So the middle ground was, let's limit the pilot to 20 years. It's, all things considered, in my opinion, it's usually in the town's best interest. If you think the pilot is a good idea for any term, it's a good idea for the full term.
Okay. And I have a list of questions, but you had said something, and we could point to it if you'd like. Did you say that the project would cost about $24 million? Did I get that correct?
No, that was the equity requirement.
Okay.
If the project were to pay full taxes, the total cost of the project would be $67 million. If the project could have a pilot, the total project cost is only 60, is about, it's about the same, it's about $66 million, a little less, it's the same, it's about a $66 million project.
So are there any projects similar that are not doing pilots that developers are financing for $66 million? And if so, is it at that rate of 7.5%? I'm not quite sure how development works, so are there a lot of other developments going on around the state for $66 million or thereof that aren't pilots? And would it be one developer or in combination have partnership developments?
I understand the question. I'm not sure I have the data on that. There are plenty of projects being built in New Jersey without pilots.
At that cost?
Yes, yes, yes. And they tend to be in towns that have very low taxes, A. B, the amenities that are part of the projects that the public would like to see are usually not included. They pretty much all have affordable housing components now because of the law requirements. But they don't have the quality of amenity packages that you're going to see here. So why they could do it without a pilot, I can't answer, because I wasn't involved in them. But there are plenty that don't have pilots, there's no question about that.
Okay. So my next question is, what is the dollar per square foot? Or what is the cost generally of each apartment? So for example, if we have 140 apartment buildings, apartments, and the pilot is $8 million, does that mean that each apart, or that we get the payment?
The land price is $8 million.
The land price is $8 million?
Right.
Does that equate to $57,000 per apartment? Is that a fair question?
Yes, it's actually, I'm impressed. The way that number got calculated, as it usually does, in not just this case, but in other cases, where you're dealing with not just public land, but anybody's land, is what can the developer afford to pay for approvals on land per market rate apartment? You take out the affordable apartments, because they kind of break even. Your money-making piece of the project are the 112 market rate apartments. And we're seeing sales of land all over New Jersey, depending on how good the market is or how weak the market is, anywhere from $35,000 per market rate unit to $75,000. In this case, the number turns out to be $71,000 a unit. That's roughly the $8 million land price, if you do the math, is a little over $71,000 a market rate unit. And that's at the high end of what developers are paying. But so are the projected rents for the market rate units. These will be some of the highest-priced rentals in, not in northern New Jersey, but certainly in Union County. We're working on similar projects right now in Chatham and Westfield, which are strong markets. And the rents are going to be high on those projects, but I don't think they're going to be as high as they are in Chatham. So the higher the rents for the market rate units, the higher the developer can pay for the land. And that's what's happening here. This is a very robust land price. One other comment, I'm sorry. The $8 million probably wouldn't be nearly as high, except for the RAB. Because without the RAB, the developer, if the town didn't remove any of the public purpose requirements that I went over before, the affordable housing, the relocation of the land, the parks, and the developer had to put another $1.75 million in his budget, that would come out of equity. He couldn't borrow any more money. That would raise the equity, would reduce the internal rate of return to below an acceptable level. We've actually run those numbers. So the RAB has really helped us get to a place where Summit can get a very high land price at the closing.
Okay. Can you, I don't know if this is, you could talk about this, if Chatham and Westfield are also doing pilots?
They are.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay. May I ask a couple more questions? Okay, sorry. So my neighbor asked me a question, and she, and so I think you've touched on this, so just to kind of drive this home, because I wasn't sure how to answer. So if you look at the projections from the different financial structures, the 30-year pilot versus the traditional pilot, I mean, I'm sorry, traditional?
Taxes.
Structure, right. Taxes. If you were to look at those numbers side by side, what I heard was, and again, totally correct me if I'm wrong, that the traditional financial structure, we would make about $8 million in taxes over 30 years versus $18 million in taxes over 30 years from the pilot. Did I get that right?
What was the take on taxes, the full taxes?
Yeah, so what would you get in taxes for the pilot over 30 years versus the traditional mortgage?
Well, I can break it, I can, I've done those numbers. Let me break it out in a couple of ways. So as I said earlier, the pilot revenues, the net pilot revenues under the proposal that we're talking about tonight, which includes the RAB, which causes a portion of the pilot revenues not to come to the town. So if you, the net pilot revenues under this plan with the RAB over 30 years is $18.5 million to the town. If we assumed that the project could be built with full taxes, which, as I've said before, I think is not correct, but let's assume for the sake of, that they got built full taxes, that were spread out among the municipality, the school, and the county, would be $37 million.
$37.
Okay? Of that $37 million of full taxes, $7.4 million would come to the city. That's your 19.8%. We use the comparisons for a variety of reasons, but it's a little misleading to suggest that the parties have an election to make here about whether the project pays full taxes or not. There will not be a project if the developer has to pay taxes, and it wouldn't be just this developer. I don't know any developer that'll do this project and make a 7% return. So I don't want folks to get fixated on giving up the $37 million in real estate taxes, because it isn't going to happen. But it's an interesting benchmark, especially when you look at the city share of the $37 million, which is less than half of what you're going to get from the pilot.
Yeah.
So...
Plus, well, and plus the school. What would we get for the school under the traditional financing, do you know? So if it's 7.4...
50%.
50%?
You'd get 50%. So, you know, $18 million. But let me just make one other point, at the risk of belaboring this. If you have a project in Summit, that's a brand-new project that's built without a pilot and pays full taxes, let's just say this one would work, let's assume hypothetically this would work, and it pays the $37 million in taxes over the 30 years. And I just said $18 million of that would, quote, "go to the schools." That isn't at all true, because schools don't in any way depend on the growth of ratables in a town to finance public schools. Whether ratables go up in Summit or go down in Summit year over year, it has no effect at all on the school's budget. The school in Summit, and in place elsewhere in New Jersey, every year will strike an expense budget. They can go up 2% a year because of the cap. They'll send that budget to you folks, and you have to fund it. If that year, your ratables dropped 40%, you still have to fund it. The school board will get its money. If the ratables went up that year 50%, the school board won't get a penny more than its budget plus 2%. So I know there's this sense that pilots sometimes are taking money away from children. I've heard that over and over again. But it is not based on the way the system of school finance works. The schools always get their money.
I have two final questions, if I may. One question I have is, Chatham and Madison had to upgrade their sewer treatment center because they're doing so much development between the two towns, and it cost $9 million. So does this, is that a consideration in terms of when we put together finances? Like, do we look at that? Is there an assessment around that?
Well, for this particular project, I'm going to assume as part of the planning board application that the developer will make, that that, if there's an infrastructure issue involving sanitary sewers, that's going to come up in the planning board process. And I'm a little out of my lane here in terms of who would have to pay for that. I actually developed a project as a principal in Madison about five years ago, Rose Hall. And we got through the planning board and found out that the sanitary sewers along the main road were inadequate, and Madison came back and made us pay for it. So I don't know how that would work in this case. I'm not aware of any extraordinary off-site cost that will be imposed by this project, but I would have to defer to your engineering experts.
And I'm not an engineering expert, so I'm not going to comment on that, but I think there's been at least an analysis of what our current infrastructure is, and it doesn't appear, you know, if you were on vacant land somewhere in the middle of a large community, I would say there's a lot of infrastructure cost that will go in. But I'm not going to get into how that, what that will look like, other than that will certainly be borne by the developers.
That's going to be, that's a planning board issue, and it won't, there's no running away from it. That's going to be analyzed before they get planning board approval. Not just sanitary sewer, but storm sewer, electric, water, gas, all of that typically, I'm not familiar with the details of your checklist in Summit, but most planning boards require all of that information. but most planning boards require all of that information as part of a final approval. So, and then if there is going to have to be an investment, then at the planning board, that's where that allocation of that cost will get negotiated.
And I've almost overextended my time, so I do have one, just last question, and I'm done. So just from your experience in being around development and understanding the financial structures, we have 52 apartments going up down on Morrison River, and we have several other apartment complexes around us, Chatham and Madison going in. So do the rents get determined as the building starts to close, like, as you get closer to closing? And what drives the rents when I feel like there's a lot of other development happening, not just in Summit, but in our region? I was just curious if you could.
You mean market rate rents? The market rate rents, not the affordables? It's the market, how strong the market is. As a, I can make this statement without fear of contradiction by any appraisers or market experts. There is a acute shortage right now in Morris, Union, Bergen, Essex counties in high-end apartments, as there is an acute shortage of single-family homes. So is that always going to be the case? I have no idea. But right now, that was happening before the pandemic because people who occupy apartments often have options to be closer to New York, such as Newark and Hudson County and in New York. And because we have a rail line that comes right down and gets you in and out of New York pretty effectively, it's here in Summit as well as Westfield and some of those other towns, those new apartment projects are running up very rapidly from people who would rather live out here than in Brooklyn or Jersey City. So I don't see any sign that there's going to be overbuilding. It's just the opposite. There's a backlog of demand for these units right now.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to open it up to members of the public if you'd like to come up one at a time and ask questions, and Dr. Powell can answer them. And I'd ask you to keep your questions under three minutes, since we have a lot, a lot of folks. I'm sorry?
State my name and address.
Yes, please.
Steve Sartorius, 37 Tulip Street. Very interesting presentation. So this was touched on a little bit, but who exactly pays the pilot? Is it the developer? So three years from now, the building's built, and Toll Brothers is done. Do they still manage the building? Or do they contract with a management company?
Well, they could contract with a management company, but the landlord pays the pilot. That's where the money comes out of the rent box.
Right, but the landlord in this case would be Toll Brothers?
Yes, well, it would be the owner. The landlord is an owner, which is a single-purpose entity that's L&M and Toll. Yes, they would be the owner of the building. They would have a management company run it. Toll, you can look them up. They have a rental division that was set up about 12 years ago, because most of, before then, all they did was single-family homes. They now manage everything that they build. The management company would collect the rents, but the source of the rents are the tenants.
Right, right.
Right.
Absolutely.
And it's the owner of the building that is obligated to turn the money over, not the manager.
And does, and then you mentioned one of the risks being that they might potentially sell the building.
I don't see that as a risk. I mean, you could have another, this is prime real estate. If Toll didn't own it, you may wind up with Avalon Bay, or I can think of five other companies that were, that are equally as strong that would want to be in this location. The sale of the property, I'm not concerned about, once it's built.
Right. But would the, I mean, if it's sold, does the town get any, I mean, say somebody bought it and wanted to, rather than, you know, 140 units, say, you know, we'll knock them down, we'll put 160 in there, or something like that. Does the town have any control?
It has complete control.
Okay.
Complete. That's, there's going to be, in addition to the financial agreement, there's another document called the redevelopment agreement, which will include in excruciating detail the obligations of the developer. It will repeat things like the height of the building, the number of units, the landscaping, probably some stuff about materials. If you, the planners who are advising your folks here are very tough. The redevelopment agreement will be 80 pages. It'll have a schedule, when they have to do certain things. So if somebody came in and bought the building five years after it was opened and decided they wanted to add on 20 more units, they'd have to come knocking on your door here and say, "May I?" And there's no entitlement to do that.
Okay, good. And then just one more question about pilot itself. In your presentation, you said your projection was, I guess, for about $700,000 pilot the first year, and then 2%?
An average, an average over 30s. I think the first year is about $550,000.
Oh, okay, all right. And when you're making your projections, right, what occupancy rate were you? Because that's, I assume how you do it, right?
95%.
95%?
Yep.
Of the 112, I guess, market rate apartments?
No, of everything. The pilot's paid by the affordable units as well.
Right. So one of the risks would be, if it's not 95%, you're
Correct.
Because it's a floating rate revenue stream.
Exactly right. So if it drops, the pilot will go down. Of course, it's kind of complicated, because the occupancy could go down to 94% or 90%, but the rents could go up a little higher than we expected, so.
Right.
But yes, you're absolutely right. The pilot is putting the city in kind of a profit-sharing arrangement with the developer in that sense.
Right.
So if the project is really successful, you're going to get more pilot revenue. If there's some downtimes, you're going to get slightly less in those moments.
Right. So anything that would detract from the project or discourage people from running, like, lack of parking, for example, might cut down on the occupancy?
That's possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, I guess that was it. Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Thank you for your report. It was very thorough and very, able to understand it for a simple guy like me. Just two quick questions. Did I miss, are the stores included in the pilot, or are they separate?
The retail? That's included.
Okay. And then the net of the pilot over the 30 years is roughly around $619,000. Roughly, that's kind of what you're at.
Correct.
It could be off a little bit.
Yep.
Is that $619,000 that goes to the city then split with the schools? No, it's strictly for the Summit coffers, and it doesn't go to Board of Ed or anything else?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't go to the, it goes to the municipal government.
Right. So we still fund, so, maybe I shouldn't say this, but one way or the other, the school board's getting funded. Right? So somehow our school board will be, still get their increases from our personal, the city's taxes. So our, even though we're getting this large sum of money coming in, it may be offset by other increases in other budgets throughout the town. Or am I wrong? I'm just speculating, I don't know, I'm just shooting that out there. It sounds like we're getting a good lumber.
Yeah, the pilot revenues will go to the municipal CFO in the municipality, not the school board. That number will go to the municipality, and it will then be part of the revenue for the next 30 years on which these folks make the municipal budget.
Mm-hmm, okay. I just wasn't sure if it was split with the school at all.
No, it's not split with the school. Now, you can do that voluntarily. And some towns have voluntarily split pilot revenues with school boards. But as I said before, the school board isn't going to know the difference in its budgets, whether this project gets built at all, whether it gets built with a pilot, or whether it got built at full taxes. The school board can only raise its budget every year about roughly 2% unless it goes to the referendum. And it sends the bill to this body, and this body pays it.
Okay, did you answer my questions?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Powell, can I just ask a clarifying question on that? When he's talking about it's being split with the schools, when the city gets the revenue stream, that becomes, when we, at the end of, when everyone strikes their budgets, the state, the county, the city, and the schools, then the tax levy would be lower because that money is available to spread out. The city's tax levy would be lower, correct?
All things being equal, if you got an extra $600,000 one year that you didn't get the prior year, and your expenses didn't go up at all, your municipal tax rate would drop. Yes.
So the school tax rate may continue to be the same, but the municipal tax rate will come down?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
But this governing body is what sets the school tax rate. Board of Ed has nothing to do with it.
Right.
Not really.
Well, sorta.
Well, I mean, but it depends on this, they send you the budget, and you figure out what the school tax rate needs to be to pay for that, and you strike it.
Right.
And they get the money. That's my point.
Yep.
Hi, Kristen Sandborn, 9 Rowan Road. I have a question, two questions. The first is, it sounds to me like the big loser in a pilot situation is the county. Do I have that right? I mean, it seems like the, am I wrong?
They win all the other times.
I'm not complaining.
This is, it's a really interesting question, because the counties have been feeding a well-worn path down to the legislature from time to time to talk about this. I think the big picture answer is this. The law is the law. The law, the state legislature is what set this split up. 95%, 5%. You're not setting it, the counties didn't set it. So with that in mind, if this project didn't get a pilot, it wouldn't get built, and the county wouldn't get 5% of the pilot. It would get nothing.
Well, it would get, presumably, it would get built differently, and they would get, they might get a higher percentage of a lower number.
That's, that's exactly right. You could build a, you know, a 45-unit project here, and they'd pay full taxes, and they would get 20% of that, or whatever the ratio is.
30.
30%, right?
Yeah, something, right?
Yeah.
So.
The counties, the counties don't get a lot of benefit from the pilot, a direct benefit.
It just sounds to me like, I mean, we're doing some kind of discussions about what Summit gains and loses, to me, which is kind of like marginal versus the county, who I feel like is the person getting shellacked.
I don't, I think shellacked is a bit strong.
Well, I know.
They could be getting more money if the project were downsized and could get built at full taxes.
Yeah, that's my point, okay.
If the counties do have agreements on this issue, it's at the legislature.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not complaining. I'm just asking the question. Because it just wasn't crystal clear to me.
You got it right, though, I think.
Okay. My other question is, at the end of 30 years, what happens?
The property goes back on the tax rolls.
Okay. And at that point, it's just whatever the governing?
No, the assessor in Summit will drive over there and look at it, look at the income, the expenses, 30 years from now, and he will do with that what he or she does with any other new ratable that's come up in town, which is to put an assessed value on it.
Okay.
And that can be challenged, but that's the normal process of just assessing. It's a new ratable, it becomes a new ratable for him.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't know if it just never became a ratable, so.
No, no, it goes right back on the tax rolls.
That was my question, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask actually another clarifying question with the county? Isn't it the same that they, they don't just get, aren't they sort of like the Board of Ed, that they set their budget, and we give them whatever their share of the budget is? Or do they, so they're a different situation?
In this case, you'll get a check every quarter from a developer for the quarterly pilot payment. And you're instructed under the law, your CFO's instructed within a few days to write a check to the county treasurer for 5% of that.
Right, but if
Write the check.
If we're not doing it as a pilot, if it were traditional ad valorem taxes?
Oh, yes, if it were traditional ad valorem taxes, I'm not sure how the county gets its money from your treasurer, but.
But the point is that they don't get, they don't automatically get 30% of everything. It's just that's how it ends up getting divvied up after everyone strikes their, after everyone sets their budgets, correct?
No, I think, no, you collect the taxes for the county.
Of course, yes.
And then you send 30% of it to them.
Right, but if we got more money, they wouldn't get more, 30, you know, more of that 30% pot.
I see what you mean, because their budget.
They set their budget, and then we give them some percentage.
You're right, you're right. They may not get.
So they're not such a big loser in this?
You're right, that's a very good point. I hadn't thought about that.
It's like, that's what I'm trying to, yes. So it's like the Board of Ed? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then the other thing is, you are actually taxing, there is going to be a tax on the land that starts, the percentage that they, that on the pilot is only on the improvements to the land, correct?
That's correct, so, good point. When the project is completed, this is a technicality that's probably worth saying out loud, under the statute, the tax assessor will place a fair market value assessment on the land with these improvements, I'm sorry, with these improvements. And that will be a regular real estate tax that the developer has to pay as part of its pilot obligation. It'll pay the land tax, and let's just, let's say that's $40,000 or $50,000. That's a credit against the full pilot payment. So then the pilot payment would be adjusted down by the amount of the land tax the developer has paid. Land tax then gets divided between, among the municipality, the school board, and the county. It's going to be a relatively small number, but it is a number, you're right.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Hi, Amy DiCivio, 106th Road. Dr. Powell, thank you, that was great explanation. Just two quick questions. The first-year pilot payment was like $530,000. And you're saying, based on a 95% occupancy rate, what is the split on that between residential, you know, the residential fees collected and the rental fees collected on that first year?
Between the residential and the retail?
I'm sorry, what did I just say? Residential and retail? Yeah, sorry.
The retail portion of the pilot is small. I don't know that I have that broken out. Let me, well, I might. I might have to, I didn't know there was going to be some math required here tonight.
We could also provide that at a later date if you don't have it up to top your head.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I'd have to go to the cash flow.
Okay, that's all right, if that's a
Multiply the retail rents times the pilot, and I don't think I have that broken out, but I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, I mean, I guess even if, as a percentage, do you know what percentage of the income they're expecting to take down from retail rent versus residential? Is that an easy number?
Yeah, let me just, that I can figure out. So at the first stabilized year, we're projecting that the net residential income, that's after vacancy, is $5.2 million. The gross retail income is $290,000. Small.
Okay. And then, second question, if, let's say things don't get to, let's say they, we have an occupancy problem, just picking sort of worst-case scenario. Does the developer, is there ever a situation where the developer renegotiates the split with the city on the joint venture that we have with them? Or do they, has that ever, does that ever occur, or what happens?
When you say the joint venture, would
Well, I'm sort of looking at it as a joint project, where sort of the city is partnering with the developer. So let's say that we have a very low occupancy rate. We've got a recession that happens, and people can't afford to move in, retail space isn't being used, and now suddenly we're banking on all this kind of money. But does this, is there a situation where the city would renegotiate with the developer to sort of save the developer from Armageddon type of thing?
No, I don't think there would be anything the developer would ask the city for at that point, because all the developer's contributions that the city's been asking for go in before the project's completed. The plazas, the affordable housing's built, the cleanup, the small parks.
I understand that.
All of that is built. So there's no taking that back, they're already there.
I guess what I'm saying is, if we're expecting a revenue stream from the project, if they're choking? if they're choking, do they ask to somehow mitigate those fees to us so that, to help themselves out? Is that a situation that could occur?
They could come back and ask for a lower pilot rate.
Okay.
But, I mean, let me put it this way. If, if, if this were not a pilot and the project was subject to full taxes, and I was here to explain why that project at full taxes was a good financial deal for the city and I showed you the numbers at ninety-five percent occupancy, you would be right to ask me the same question about that project at full taxes. What if occupancy drops thirty percent?
Right.
The developer's going to file a tax appeal and he's going to get his taxes reduced and you're going to get less money. If there's a problem with an income property in town, whether it's on a pilot or full taxes, chances are, property's going to pay less during that period of trouble in taxes or pilot. And I don't know that anybody can do anything about that. You can't force somebody to pay high taxes on a property that's spiraling downward.
Right.
So, I think that's part of the risk of the property tax system, is that in, when, when the economy takes a dip, as I'm sure you all have experienced, tax revenues take a dip.
Or pilot revenues, either way.
Or pilot revenues, right.
Okay, thank you.
Can I take my mask off?
Yes.
It's a little hard to breathe. Beth Welsh, 129 Blackburn Road. And just point of information, I've been managing property in the downtown of Summit for thirty years, so I know a lot about rent and it doesn't continually go up. When there are troubles, it goes, it goes flat or it goes to zero and you have to solve the problem. I also have, want to point out that our lovely, authentic downtown is woefully underparked for the as-built physical plant and this project will put a huge underparked facility in competition with the parking that serves the downtown. And as any, I'd like to know, two questions, actually. I want to go back to President Fox's point. When the county strikes its budget, so then it comes to Summit to look for money, does this pilot process mean there's just one less source to feed the county and the rest of us residents have to, and, and other property town, property owners have to feed whatever the county budget is?
I believe it's the opposite, but can you confirm that?
Well, you'll have pilot revenues, the municipality will have the pilot revenues as additional revenue to-
I would just say, this project produces nothing for the county right now, virtually nothing. So, the loss is really negligible to the county, in fact, this project would benefit them more just through the pilot agreement, or it's nothing. I mean, it, this is a unique property. It's just not producing anything. So, it's real no loss as far as the county goes.
But if the county budget goes up and they come looking to Summit-
But there's, it also has to do with the growth of the county, so it's not just a, you know, what their, their growth of their budget goes. I think it's also the valuation that plays into that to determine the ratio, percentage of the overall distribution among the municipalities in Union County, and that's how it struck.
But all fully taxable properties solve the problem. This one is just contributing to the city and they have to figure out.
And that's a question where we could all pose to every municipality that goes down the pilot road.
Right.
But ultimately, they get, they get a percentage of revenue from a pilot agreement.
Right, okay. So, I go back to my other point, which is, how much analysis has been looked at? If we have an underparked situation, we lose parking to build this building and we have, and it's underparked, so now we have residents competing for the parking that now serves the as-built environment we have. Has anybody done analysis, what happens when those buildings start having to reduce rents or go more and more vacant and go for tax appeals?
That's, um-
That's certainly beyond the scope of-
That's beyond my, uh-
That, this district. Although, as an entirety-
I'm out of my lane at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I think as an entirety, we, we have had parking consultants, as you know, have looked at this entire downtown area with parking and the ebbs and flows of it, and we've had many conversations about this, Beth.
Yep.
And certainly over the last couple of years, if, if we were building for what we were three years ago, we'd be in a lot of trouble-
Right.
-with just depth service. So, there's an ebb and flow, there'll be some temporary loss, there's, we're still working through the temporary and longer-term parking solutions beyond the analysis of what we're talking about tonight with Sub District Three. But certainly parking is, plays into this. The overall competition with how this plays out with every building in this property is well beyond, we, it's really hard to say because of how this fluctuates and what is done with each property, the parking needs in any given year. So, it's a very difficult analysis to ever really do.
It is very difficult, exactly. But I'm saying, but is, is anybody doing it?
I think we've done enough analysis about this parking and how we look at it, and certainly with this project, a redevelopment agreement will not get done until we have the parking solutions in place. That's all I can say about the parking.
Okay. Are there any other questions from members of the public?
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. Thank you, it was a great presentation, President. Thank you, Mayor, council members. So, this pilot agreement, I knew nothing about what a pilot agreement was until tonight, so thank you. I'm still trying to wrap my brain around what is going on, because it, it sounds like such a great idea. Here's a builder, he can take this agreement and you skirt around giving any money to county, to the county, except the five percent, right? So, why wouldn't we do that to every builder coming in? To some big redevelopment, right? I mean, wouldn't that be a great idea for thirty years? You don't have to pay anything but to the city. Is that right? Is my understanding of that right? Except the five percent going to the county?
Do you want to take that?
Right, I'm trying, I'm just trying to really understand this.
Well, I mean, I can answer one thing. You can't do a pilot unless it's designated as an area in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation.
Okay.
So, if you have a regular lot in a neighborhood, it's not designated as an area of redevelopment or rehabilitation, you can't do it.
You can tear down a whole building.
The reason that they, the reason the legislature ultimately did this is there were lots of blighted properties in New Jersey. Think about all the different areas in like Newark and-
Jersey City. I did do some reading on it, so I do understand.
And so, what they did is, they had these sites that were old factories that were totally contaminated. A developer's not going to go in there, clean up the soils and remediate, build a project, they'd lose money.
Right.
So, they developed this pilot so that you could take these blighted areas and improve them and ultimately get them back on the tax rolls in twenty or thirty years, but it's a way that you're using private dollars to redevelop properties to their highest and best use. So, when you look at the, the, the law, it's limited to areas in need of redevelopment and rehabilitation. So, many, many towns where this is, where developments are going on, and I represent a number of towns, they're not in areas of need of redevelopment, so pilot's not even an option. You can't do it. You have to have it specifically designated. That's why you went through this whole, the, the whole process with the planning board and all that.
So, and I understand that. So, I'm trying to understand why that's, and I, I'm trying to, I'm listening to your presentation, understand why we're doing it here with a six billion dollar company, Toll Brothers. They're, they're huge. They have tons of money and we're selling them an eight million dollar property, which, you know, homes sell here for four, five million dollars. Okay, they can build this, they can sell those units out. We're all like, so many members in the public are like scratching their heads, saying, why do they need this pilot agreement? I mean, it sounds like a great idea. You guys, the city's getting the money. Great. I'm all for it, not going, giving it to the county, this, we can use it. But I don't, I'm, we're all just trying to understand why they need the pilot agreement, so I think we're all just a little confused about that. And then you mentioned that we're doing it because of the size of, of the redevelopment in the building. And you quickly flipped through one of the slides of, it was just the view of one of the slides, so I couldn't really see it, but it looked like there was like a sixth floor view of like, on top of the fifth floor, it looked like some windows or something?
There is not, the sixth floor.
So, I couldn't really see it, because it was like a quick show.
And it's not because of, the redevelopment is not because of the size. I'll let Dr. Powell explain.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't, I couldn't, he's mentioned something about the size and that's why we were doing the pilot, so I didn't know. If you could just-
The basic, the basic rationale for the pilot is that the city has its own public purpose objectives that it wants to achieve with this project that are not economically feasible if they're put into the developer's budget. The affordable housing, the cleanup of the site, relocating the, the pipeline, and the million three in public parks that are going to be built by the developer in and around that Broad Street neighborhood for the benefit of the public. Those costs, which are typically not included in a developer project, are now feasible for the developer to pay for because of the pilot.
So, he's making, he has to make enough money on the project.
Right, and the fact that Toll or any other developer-
So, that's what I understood before.
-has eight billion dollars in the bank is, is, is kind of interesting, but it doesn't say why they would automatically come in and do a project in Summit that doesn't pencil out. They don't do projects that aren't profitable. That's probably one of the reasons they have eight billion dollars in the bank, is that they only do projects that have returns on their investment that are at least competitive to other things they could be doing. And that's, at the beginning of the presentation, I was trying to illustrate the difference between what the return to the developer looks like at full taxes, which is slightly profitable, but certainly not profitable enough to attract a developer. And with a pilot, that return rises significantly so that the developer can now come in and not only build a project that the developer wants, but can afford to build into the project a number of other features that the city would like to see incorporated in the project in the public interest.
Okay, can I ask one more question? Now, if the project was scaled down and not five stories, would that be something that would still be, within the pilot agreement, the developer could still do and still make money from?
You'd have less affordable housing, you'd get less for the land, you probably wouldn't get the, I don't know, it depends on, I have to run that analysis, but all the other infrastructure improvements that they're talking about doing, the three parks, as this project goes down, the developer's ability to do those things, this has been kind of a negotiation back and forth. This project started out with more units and less units and we've been trying to find what we think is a sensible middle ground between the two partners in this public-private partnership. That can be a win-win. Win for the developer, but has to be a win for the city. And the project that I think we've put together here, at least financially, I can't speak of the design and the parking and all that, but financially, this is one of the more creative public-private partnerships I've seen in terms of satisfying the two objectives that need to be satisfied. And if you reduce the size of the project, a lot of the things the city really wants to see here probably can't be included.
Okay, thank you.
Deborah Oliver, Tulip Street. Just following up on the discussion about size, yes, indeed, in the RFQ that was originally filed, the number of units was going to be 113. At 140 units, we are seventy, we have a 73 space shortfall in parking spaces just for the residents of the housing unit. That's not including public spaces that are currently availing themselves of that lot, overflow from St. Teresa's, et cetera. So, and coupled with that is a very broad consensus within the community that this building is grossly overscaled within the context of Summit's existing city fabric. I find it interesting that there have been no three-dimensional presentations of the site development, either Sub District One, Two, or Three. Only site plans and elevations, which, as you know from working with architects, are a fictitional rendition of a facade taken at an infinite distance. I have a design background, I'm showing that. So, for me, it's great to hear about $600,000 a year, a year coming into Summit. That's really nice, especially if it's $30,000 in revenue right now from that lot. But I really want to know how we can revisit from a design perspective and from the actual impact on all of our lives, and all of our lives should be benefiting, and not just the developer's pocketbook, and maybe Summit could make a little less money. What, how does one go about ascertaining from a financial analysis coupled with a design analysis, a break-even point? Put in adequate parking, reduce the scale by reducing the number of units. There's also controversy surrounding whether an existing corner of a street that gets repaved is actually a plaza, or is it really just still a sidewalk and they're calling it a plaza? Is a 30 by 60-foot patch of grass, which is like the size of my lawn, is that really a public green space that deserves an incentive bonus of an added fifth story, et cetera, et cetera? So, how do you, as in your business, help cities find a balance? Like the wonderful Library Plaza in Princeton, which has a five-story building, it's hiding a hideous garage. Everybody loves it. I know you were involved.
I built the garage.
I know. So, how do you find that sweet spot where the city is happy and the finances are also good?
I, this is one of those times in, in the evening when I'm happy to, to be a punter rather than a quarterback. I think the answer to your que, I've, I've been on both sides of this, and so I think the answer, answers to the questions are policy questions. They're not financial questions. And I was brought in to look at a set of options that a governing body has established for objectives, outcomes that they would, it would like to see. And I think we're, we've been successful in helping them understand the benefits and how we can make all that happen. But I'm not sure I'm the one to talk to about how many stories the building should be or how many parking spaces the project should have. That's been the subject of intense professional attention. I know that's the fact, by the city and by the developer. And as Michael has suggested, and he can talk for himself on this, obviously, I think that discussion is still ongoing, and not, not about the height, but about the parking issue, so. But as I say, I think that's, this is more of a policy question and not so much a financial question.
Well, then I would put to council, where is the sweet spot? Because from where I stand, you know, we're not done with design development.
Well, Ms. Oliver, just to answer your question about the parking, we have said all along at the last presentation that we are still working on parking and we are not going to sign redevelopment agreement until the parking issue has been worked out. So, that is still underway. And as to your assertion that there's, that a five-story building is not appropriate, I would point to the Bassett Building, for example, five stories right on Springfield Avenue, the, the lane-
Do you know what the frontage is on Springfield Avenue?
Yes, actually, that block is about 267 feet.
Okay, well, the, the facade of the proposed housing unit is close to 500 feet long, not greater than 250 feet, as was stated by Phil Abramson in an answer to a resident's question. So, that, I think unintentionally, has been misrepresented. The frontage on Broad Street of the five-story building is 487 feet. You can measure it on Google Maps, you know. You can walk it off.
Well, I, I have to look at that.
There is nothing comparable in town. It is the equivalent of taking 1 to Forest Avenue, which is a four-story building, 48 feet high, that dropped down to 36 feet, three stories, at midpoint. 1 to Forest Avenue is 250 feet long frontage, a 15-foot setback. The proposed housing building is closer to 500 feet long, 60 feet high, and a 17-foot setback. So, there are no comparables in town.
I would disagree with you on that.
Well, you know, the way to solve it is to do a model, a scale model, that puts the proposed structure in the surroundings so that we can see, we see that the Vito de Gallo building is petite compared to the proposed new housing. We see that even the Y, which is a fairly large building, will be one-third the size of the proposed housing. This, the drawings haven't been produced. I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble with it. I need some water. But, so this is what's lacking in the understanding for all of us on what it is we're actually getting.
I, I think you've made some assumptions that aren't correct. I, you know, well, this isn't really the forum for this.
Well, it bears on the finances, so it is.
Well, except that this is a presentation about finances with Dr. Powell. This is not an opportunity to, to- an opportunity to, to talk about the, you know, the, the heights. We're not prepared to have that discussion tonight. If you'd like to, we can get back to you on that, but this is not the, the forum for that.
Right. But in general, in the design field, you have to take it all as a ball, all, a total package.
I understand that, but, but we don't have the professionals to address that tonight. We have a professional talking about the finances.
Right. So I was redirecting my question to counsel.
Right. And I was telling you that we can get back to you on that.
Okay. Well, I look forward to another town hall meeting for everyone to get some answers, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis was waiting, if you'd let her go first, please.
My name is Karen Davis. My address is 44 Ridgedale Avenue. And I very much appreciated your presentation, thank you. But I'm going to be referring back to some of the financials that Mr. Rogers mentioned at the last meeting. So at the February 15th Common Council meeting, City Administrator Michael Rogers explained how residential property taxpayers have recently become burdened. Mr. Rogers stated that in Summit, the total value of residential property has risen, while the total value of industrial property has declined, with the end result that the percentage of property tax dollars paid by residential owners has been increasing. Ten years ago, residential owners paid only 80% of the property taxes, but now we pay almost 83%. To unburden residential owners, our city is pursuing the Broad Street West redevelopment. Because Broad Street West is a commercial development, the revenue it generates will reduce the property tax burden on residential property owners. As a residential property owner myself, I thank the mayor and common council for pursuing the Broad Street West redevelopment. Planning for Broad Street West started years ago, when our city government first saw the growing pressures on residential property taxpayers. Of course, none of us will see any tax relief from the Broad Street West redevelopment until the project actually takes place. Throughout the planning process, the only way to keep our municipal tax rates as low as possible has been for our mayor and common council to carefully trim our budget. In our last five municipal budgets, there was one year which had no increase in the municipal property tax rate. Not only was there one year with 0% increase, the biggest increase over the five years was only 1.05%. So I would like to thank the mayor and common council for their ethic of financial responsibility in keeping our municipal property tax rates as low as possible while we plan for the Broad Street West redevelopment. But our need for property tax relief has arrived. Coming at us from one direction, we have the drop in value of industrial properties, which has burdened residential property owners. Coming at us from another direction, we have a substantial drop in payments to the city from Overlook Hospital due to the completion of their settlement agreement. We property taxpayers are pressured from two directions. We need the revenue that the Broad Street West redevelopment will provide. The time has come to put our plans into action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, come on up.
Good evening. Christopher Welsh, 129 Blackburn Road, local architect. I just have two questions real quick. One is, was there any consideration by council going through this process of looking at the site as redevelopment? Did they ever consider the subdivision of the land to offer it to private developers to change the character of the massing? And I ask the question to the financial side, is, has any financial analysis been done? If it was subdivided, then individual private developers could come in and build their own different projects, different scales, smaller scale, but diversified and provide the parking under the ordinances of the City of Summit?
Mr. Welsh, we're talking about a piece of property that's about a, an acre and a half. Are you, are you saying we should subdivide this acre and a half?
Yep. And, and you, and don't use the ordinances you have for requirements of parking, because you may find, you'll find developers who can financially do it at a smaller scale, and you'll get more revenue on taxes.
You, you're talking about subdividing it for single-family homes, for two or three single-family homes?
No, townhouses.
For townhouses?
Yeah.
Okay. Like six or eight?
Depends on the ordinance. Less variations from each developer on a single lot.
A reasonably high density for luxury townhouses anywhere in New Jersey is five or six to the acre. You can get five or six townhouses on the site.
Get more.
Well, you could get more, it wouldn't be quite the same, they would be stacked and look more like apartments.
Yeah, but they'd be less than five stories.
They would be less than five stories.
It could be three stories.
Worth a whole lot less than what we're talking about here.
As a market rate?
Yeah.
On taxes on land?
Oh, yeah, the whole thing. I mean, this is a, this is a 66, a $66 million project.
No, I understand what it is, but it's not the character of Summit.
Well, that's a different issue. I thought you were just talking about land planning.
Yeah, I am talking about land planning. Private developers who would be willing to come in and build high-quality.
They would. Probably would give the site a value of, I don't know, two, two and a half million dollars.
Okay. What would the taxes on those be?
I don't know. It would be $10,000 a unit.
Like 10?
First, my name is Diane Dresdale, 54 Valley View Avenue, and wonderful presentation. We all need to go back home and watch the president, but before we do that, I hope I'm, didn't miss, so I'm not asking a question that was already addressed. But my question is, I mean, we had very large and notable developers involved, were there competing bids for many developers? And how, several then, right?
About 10 redevelopment teams were interviewed.
So that tells me that this is, that tells me that if so many successful developers were interested in this land, then it's likely going to be successful. That's where I'm going on that. And you can never, you know, risk is always involved. The parking will be something you're still looking at and to address. I did appreciate what, I think she left, the, what the professional design person said that about having, to scales, so that we can see, public can see, the best we can, you know, something just 3D, and maybe that'll, you know, address some concerns. So, but thank you. I know a lot of work over, many councils have been going into this, so it's not, it's, it's over several years and, and many representatives, so, and you guys are, in some sense, taking the heat. But thank you very much, and I, I look forward to further discussion on this and hopefully completion with success. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public? Okay, we have one, oh.
Quick thing.
State your name, please.
Sorry, Erwin Miller, 5 Nob Hill Drive. I'm not sure if this is your purview, but you brought it up in your presentation, so I'll ask. In terms of the affordable housing, is there any, like, guarantees that members of this existing Summit community have priority to access that housing? Or is it like anyone from around the country can apply and, how's that work?
You, you cannot, in order to get the units certified to satisfy the town, the city's obligation, they cannot be restricted to Summit residents. So you'll advertise, they'll be advertised in the area, and anyone in the area who wants to apply can apply.
Or not in the area, like, near the city or anywhere, anyone can apply?
Anyone can apply.
Got it. And this has been, like, discussed as?
That's, that's a, that's a policy that is beyond the municipal governing body's authority to change. If you try to impose residency requirements on the affordable units, they would not be certified and therefore wouldn't count in satisfying your affordable housing obligation.
Mr. Miller, yeah, when we were doing the negotiations with Fair Share Housing to come to an agreement about what, how many units do we have in Summit that count, and how many do we need to build, one of the things that Fair Share offered to us was to turn, the, currently, the senior housing, the Vito Gallo building, is given preference to Summit residents. They said if we take that away, that stip, that restriction, then we could count it towards our, our affordable housing commitment. We felt very strongly, as a council at the time, and that was five years ago, that we should give priority to our seniors who've raised their families here. And so that doesn't count towards our affordable housing, because we said, no, we're not going to lose that restriction, that preference. So it is, it is the case, if we did restrict the housing, the for, the new affordable housing, it would not count towards our, our, our commitment, which was, at the time, 50 units over 10 years.
Okay, cool. Oh, it's a commitment for the, it's not a commitment for the building?
No, it's a commitment the City of Summit has to, to the state of New Jersey through a, a settlement agreement.
Got it. So there could be no affordable housing in the building, we could just have it somewhere else?
No, there's also a law.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There's a requirement.
There's a percentage.
Thank you.
Just.
Just real quickly, I think your, people were telling me that the presentation on YouTube only started with our questioning, so I don't know if people at home were able to see his presentation. It just might be something that you might want to look into.
Sure, sure.
It will be posted on the website, though, for people to look at.
The city website, your presentation?
It'll, it'll be posted tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other comments from members of the public?
Council President, we had one email received.
I think so, too. But if you want me to read it for the record, I will.
Uh, sure.
Okay. Yes?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Will Von Klemper of Colonial Grove wrote in regarding the presentation, before the presentation, if our city operating budget receives roundly $550,000 per year from the pilot and property taxes on Broad Street West, and if in addition, the $8 million we receive one time from the sale of the land is the equivalent of roughly another $350,000 of annual cash inflow, he's guesstimating, that would be $900,000 in annual benefit to the city's operating budget from Broad Street West versus just planting grass once the firehouse moves. Is this math roughly correct, and how does the $900,000 or corrected number compare to the annual city operating budget?
That might be a, I think it's a question for the city administrator, I think.
But the numbers are a little bit off.
Yeah, I'm not, it's, I'm not 100% certain on how to answer that question. I'd have to give a little more thought, because I, it's, it's not really clear to me. The answer.
I'm not sure how the $8 million purchase price got converted into $350,000.
You can't, you can't take the million and, and spread it out over 30 years. It's a, it's a one-time revenue source.
Right. It's a one-time revenue source, yeah. And it will sit, you know, like, I think I may have stated that the intention would be certainly to be offsetting debt that we've incurred with the firehouse initially, and it provides a revenue source and a budget. However, the council chooses to disperse that over time, that will, will play out, you know, over as many, until you completely deplete it. And that's just really a, a budget call, I think, at that point.
And could you also just state what is the, the total city budget roughly?
The, the total budget this year will be over $52 million.
All right. So I, I guess we're done with this presentation at this point?
It was great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. This was very helpful. And I guess we'll give everyone a minute if people need a, a seventh ending stretch. So we're going to get started again, folks. All right. We're now on to public comments. Are there any members of the public who have any comments on anything that's not on the
Hey, Erwin Miller, 5 Nob Hill Drive. Wondering about the Summit Board of Health, and maybe this is on your website, I wasn't able to find it, in, in terms of, like, procedures. So they met on January 24th. It's been a month and a bit, they haven't published the minutes, they're saying they're gonna, they're gonna approve the minutes at the next meeting. They're not meeting again till May. It seems like, given the public health emergency that's been imposed upon us, the Summit Board of Health should meet much more frequently than every four months. And so I'm wondering if there are any procedures to have them meet more frequently, to have them publish the minutes, maybe in this one case, how that all works, if there's anything that can be done.
I believe that their meetings are on a quarterly basis, so that is their schedule. And minutes are generally, they need to be approved at the meeting, so you're not going to be able to see the minutes till those, till that meeting, till the, to the meeting minutes have been voted upon at the next meeting. I don't know, do they televise, or? No? Okay.
No, I get that, I'm just.
Right. I don't think there's.
Considering the evolving nature of the circumstances on the ground with regard to knowledge about the efficacy and safety of the vaccines that are being implemented by the Summit Board of Health, let's say, or the policies that are changing so rapidly in our daycares, here in this board, in this meeting hall, in town, they haven't changed the frequency with which they're meeting? And so is there a way to identify if it's possible to have them change the frequency with which they meet?
I'm going to throw this to Council Member Harrison, who is the liaison to the.
Thank you, Council President. I am actually going to refer you to our Safety and Health Committee. And that committee, which meets twice a month, and Megan Avalon, the city's health officer, actually frequents that meeting as well. And so there is no loss in communication between the Board of Health and the mayor and our municipal administrator, city administrator, and two councilmen serve on that committee as well. And so the, the health efficacy of the city is actually having two lanes that are looking at it.
So the Safety Committee does encompass Health, Safety and Health Committee?
Safety and Health Committee with our councilwoman, Beth Little, is the current chair.
So I'm also going to direct you to the city administrator.
So, Mr. Miller, I think basically you're asking, can they increase their meeting schedule? Sep, you know, Board of Health is a separate, it's a creation of, of the council, and they, they decide their count, meeting agenda for the year. Certain question, that's certainly a good question to pose to the Board of Health. They could always have special meetings. They set their meeting schedule just like this council does every year, and, but that doesn't prevent them from meeting more frequently. It's certainly a question for the Board of Health, you know, about the frequency.
Okay.
Are there any other, oh, you're still?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Are there any other com, public comments?
Hi. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford. First, I want to say thank you to a couple people. Say thank you to Aaron. He was so nice after the last meeting to get back to me around 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, with my answers that I asked him. So he works very hard, I want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to the Summit Police Department. I asked a while back at a council meeting to increase the safety around town when we had a lot of bikes stolen. So I want to say thank you, thank you. I have seen a lot of increased patrol around my area for the first time in many years. And I know we've had a lot of theft, so I want to say thank you that I see the police cars around, and I do feel a lot safer now. You know, we have put a lot of cameras up, so I want to say thank you to the police. So we do see that, and we see the presence, so I want to say thank you about that. But I did come specifically today to talk about the overdevelopment, not just within Summit, but the neighboring towns. And I think this is something that mayor, I think that maybe this is something that you need to talk to the neighboring mayors about, because I think, yes, we have the Broad Street West development happening, but our neighboring towns, like Chatham specifically, were all developing, and everybody wants to build, build, build. were all developing, and everybody wants to build, 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 and I'm really concerned. So, for instance, you know, it's just been brought to my attention, Ms. Allen, you just mentioned it before, the 52 units that want to be built at the corner of Morrison River Road, it's down by the Volvo dealership. I live on Bedford Road, I have a really hard time on Morris Avenue. That's one. There's the 140 units in Sub District 3 that we're talking about, another 40 units in Sub District 2 that you're talking about. On the corner of River Road, right across from the lumber store in Chatham, they are now going to be building 259 units. And then down further, on River Road in Chatham, they're going to be putting, Toll Brothers is going to be putting 50 units. So, that's about 550 apartment units slash townhomes within three miles of this chambers that we're at. So, imagine, within the next couple of years, 550 apartments with two to three bedrooms and all those increased cars and traffic. Now, Bristol Myers-Swippe is not even finished yet, so I don't know what the south, their south complex?
East.
That's east, okay, sorry. So, their east, their east complex, is that land, what's happening there?
It's been sold to a developer, but we, they've not...
Okay.
But they've not put any plans in, so I have no idea.
Right, so, and Marco Polo just got sold, that lot down there by me. So, I'm, we're all like on high alert right now, because I can't even go up and down Morris Avenue. So, I really would like you, as mayor, to kind of come to terms of what's happening, maybe with the other towns, and say, okay, maybe as a redevelopment and developing, overdeveloping, we can just kind of say, how much can we handle within our towns and our traffic? Because with all these 550 units coming in in the next couple of years, can we handle this mass entrance of people? So, that's why I'm here, and I just, I'm very nervous as a homeowner, my kids are going to start driving this year. My little ones, my older ones are gone, but my little ones are here driving, and I'm, we're all just kind of very nervous of this happening, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so I'm going to close the comment period, and we'll be moving on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first ordinance?
Yes. Ordinance 22-3252, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-43, Rent Commission, Subsection 2-43.5, Powers and Duties.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Council President. I am introducing for hearing ordinance 22-3252 that will amend the code, Section 243, Rent Commission, Subsection 2-43.5, the powers and duties to remove subpoena powers. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the code to the rent commission's power to issue subpoenas. The amendment is necessary to bring code into conformance with New Jersey law. So, Section C under 2-43.5, Powers and Duties, we are striking the statement that says to subpoena landlords or tenants to appear in response to complaints with appropriate records where necessary. It is New Jersey law that the commission is not eligible to have subpoena power. And so, I move this ordinance for hearing.
One second.
Okay, so, I'm going to open the hearing. Is there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Sure, just very briefly, Council President. I was the liaison to the rent commission my first two years on council. I want to say thank you to everyone that's been a part of it in that time and effectively resuscitated it over the last several years. This commission has a few different objectives. One is to educate landlords and tenants on their rights and responsibilities. The other is to effectively mediate landlord and tenant disputes. They can, and I think will continue to do that really effectively, despite this change in state law. So, that's all I want to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Ms. Berger?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dorothy Berger, 6 Edgar Street, Summit, New Jersey. Obviously Summit, but I'm also the chair of the Summit Rent Commission. I served with Councilman Vartan and now with Councilman O'Sullivan. I just want to understand, this has been in, the subpoena power has been in fact for many, many years. And I was thinking, after the last council meeting, when Councilwoman Harrison had said she didn't know why, or we, in fact, is what she said, don't even know how that came to be. But I guess my question here is, so this is being removed because there's been a change in the state law? Is that why you're proposing this?
Is that the question?
Yeah, that's the question.
I can, I'm going to direct it to our attorney, Mr. Jacoby, to address that.
There's a recent New Jersey Supreme Court case that took place in Newark, dealing with its civilian review board, and I'll just read the quote from the New Jersey Supreme Court case. What it says is, "There is no inherent authority for a council to delegate its subpoena power to a non-legislative body of its creation. To the extent that the council itself has subpoena power, as recognized in the case, that subpoena power is inherent and tied to the power to legislate." So, you are a, the rent board is a creation of this council, and based on this case, which is binding on this council, all municipalities, all courts, because this is the highest court in New Jersey, a creation of council like the rent board cannot have subpoena power.
Okay, because we couldn't find a copy of that. Could I get a copy of that?
I can give it to you right now.
Okay, great.
This is called, it's called Fraternal Order of Police versus City of Newark. It's actually, I have it highlighted in tabs, you can have my copy of it.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
But it'll, it'll explain, this was not done to be punitive, it's done to be brought into compliance, because what happened in the City of Newark case is they created a civilian review board to look at police conduct or misconduct. And when they did that, they gave this civilian review board subpoena power. It was challenged, and the Supreme Court said, you can have a civilian review board, but they can't have subpoena power. The council can have subpoena power, but they can't. So, it's very similar, and it doesn't mean that the role that you're serving is any less effective, and if subpoenas need to ever be issued, it would have to come through the council. But I can tell you, like, Matt, you, I'm an attorney, I can't issue subpoenas unless I'm involved in a litigated court action. I file a complaint, then I have subpoena power. But if I don't have a filed complaint, I can't, as an attorney, go and just issue subpoenas. It's, they're very, it's very limited to when people can issue subpoenas, and it really derives from a legislative body. So, for example, you can see, like, you'll hear Congress, Congress will want somebody to come testify before them, they're a legislative body, they can issue a subpoena compelling you to come testify before Congress. This body could do the same thing, the state senate could do the same thing, but commissions that are created by this body cannot do that. So, I'll just give you a copy of the case, and you can have it.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And Ms. Berger, thank you for your work with the rent commission.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so, are there any other comments, questions? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on this, and Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance for final consideration?
Ordinance 22-3252, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-43, Rent Commission, Subsection 2-43.5, Powers and Duties.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Council President. As we just heard in the hearing, ordinance 22-3252, an ordinance to amend the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 243, to remove subpoena power, and I move for this ordinance to be approved.
One second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and then we're moving on to resolutions. So, our first one is administrative policies. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 9514 that urges the legislature to swiftly pass Bill Number S330 to restore the energy tax receipts. The energy tax receipt is a tax on a public utility for the use of the public right-of-way in lieu of property taxes. Originally, these taxes were assessed and collected by the municipalities, however, in 2008, the law changed, which allowed the state to collect that revenue for the convenience of the public utilities, which then was supposed to be distributed back to the municipalities. However, we know that once money goes back, goes into the general fund at the state, it is difficult to get back. So, according to the New Jersey League of Municipalities, since 2008, diverting that revenue has, into the state's general fund, has cost the New Jersey municipalities approximately $14 billion, which ultimately leads to our town cutting services or increasing fees, which is something that we have discussed tonight in length. Encouraging our legislators to pass the bill and encouraging the governor to sign the bill is a way of restoring the revenue rightly due to our towns, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members, Councilmember O'Sullivan?
I just have a comment. You know, we have a very engaged populace here, and I would just urge everyone here tonight to call our local representatives down in Trenton and get this expedited as quickly as we can.
And the governor.
And the governor.
All right, any other comments from members of council?
Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say it's a good bill. As the Finance Chair, it means actual solid tax dollars coming back to Summit. I'm thankful for the sponsors of the bill in the state senate, and I'm hopeful that it passes and that it's signed. Thank you very much.
Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, and we're moving on, we have three finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, this first one is Number 9503. This resolution authorizes an emergency temporary appropriation within the parking utility temporary budget. A few reminders. First, the parking utility budget is a separate budget from the operating budget but follows similar rules. Second, the temporary budget is in place until the operating budget is passed. And then, third, this is not an emergency, simply the statutory language used so that the parking utility can continue to pay bills. The total amount of this appropriation is $112,000, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any questions, any comments or questions from members of council? Comments or questions from members of the public?
Sorry, I just want to ask, why? Erwin Miller, 5 Nob Hill Drive. Why, you, you, why, why do you use the word emergency?
So, it's the, through you, Council President. So, emergency is the statutory language that we're using because it's, we're required to. So, the temporary municipal operating budget and the temporary parking utility budget have to be 26.5%, no more than 26.5% of the budget that was there last year. So, that's just to basically make sure we're not spending too much money now in the first quarter of the year before we pass officially our budget. And so, in order to basically guess at what expenses we're going to need through that first three months of the year before we pass the budget, we have to create a temporary operating budget. And then, if we need to change it because we have to pay something, we have to change it, and that's what we're doing here now. So, it's not an emergency, it's just the statutory language that we have to use in order to do that. So, we're just paying the bills, effectively.
Okay, I'm sure I'll talk to you after about it.
Sure.
Do you have anything to add?
Did I miss anything there, Tammy or Mike?
Yeah, we could, does the CFO have anything to add?
That's exactly what it is. I mean, there's no mystery around it. Sorry, I jumped, I jumped to your question, Tammy, sir.
So, Mr. Miller, the statute is called a temporary emergency funding appropriation, and it's, it does...
It's not outside of the normal procedure.
No, no.
No, not at all.
And it all becomes part of the budget. It's not that we're spending money that doesn't become part of the budget.
Yeah.
When we pass the budget, this will all be in it.
In fact, it's very much within the statutory procedures.
Yes.
It's not outside the...
So, okay, I don't know, but the great idea was to call it out.
The legislature.
You could, you could talk to them about that.
This is another one for the state legislature, yes.
Right, okay, so, are there any other comments or questions from members of the public? Anything else from council? We need a roll call for this, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and then moving on to finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9487. This resolution authorizes the execution of a grant agreement with the New Jersey State Library. So, this is a matching grant in the amount of $31,170.20, which will fund the installation of a generator at the library. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the final finance resolution, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9512. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the Union County 2022 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Program. So, this application is in support of the City Hall Records Improvement Project, and this is a matching grant as well. So, we're applying for $27,523 in matching funds for this project that has a total cost of $55,046. And this is in this, this is the second phase of this project that will allow the excellent city clerk and her wonderful team to be able to safely and efficiently store and access the thousands of records for which they are responsible. And I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9472, to award the bid for Stormwater Clean and Inspection, Section M, for $62,518. National Water Main Company of Carney, New Jersey has won the bid, and what they're doing is preventive maintenance. They will perform a video inspection and clean debris out of our storm sewers in Section M on the city's watershed map. This area of town is Oak Ridge Avenue down to Glenside and those surrounding roads bordering Mountainside and Berkeley Heights. These routine inspections allow the city to identify problems before they become major issues. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we have one more capital projects resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9509, to declare a vacancy for a land use assistant position in the Department of Community Services pending closed session discussion. Earlier tonight in closed session, we discussed the promotion of Chris Nicola to zoning assistant housing inspector. Because of his promotion, DCS has a vacancy for a land use assistant position, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and now we have one Safety and Health Resolution. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. Safety and Health Resolution Number 9491 is to declare a vacancy for one firefighter in the fire department. This vacancy is coming because of the retirement of firefighter Frank DeLuca, who's been a 28-year veteran of the fire department, to be grateful to him all the best in his retirement. But this vacancy is necessary in order to maintain adequate staffing levels and minimize overtime. The new firefighter we chose from the list is already the extended up of absolutely qualified firefighters, so we expect that they can be filled quickly and will be back to full staffing in the fire department. But I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. wants to comment individually on any of them. So hearing appears that no one does. So do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're now on to, we have an item for discussion, action, or referral from Capital Projects and Community Services. Counselmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9518. This is regarding the gas leaf blower pilot program. Last summer, council implemented a three-month ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. It was a careful and modest approach to a difficult problem that was highly successful on a few levels. We lived in a much quieter community. The air was cleaner. There was minuscule impact on our law enforcement. And the negative impact to our local landscaping businesses did not materialize. I don't want to rehash all of the research and data about gas-powered leaf blowers, but let's just say the research is clear. These are loud and dirty machines. This year, we have decided not to renew the three-month ban. However, council is going to ask for voluntary participation from our residents as well as ask our residents to communicate with their landscapers to voluntarily not use their gas-powered leaf blowers this summer. I know there are many people that are disappointed that we are not renewing the three-month ban this summer. But there are two main reasons why we are stepping aside at this time. First, California's governor has signed legislation banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers and lawn mowers starting in 2024. Illinois and New York State are not far behind with their own legislation. And the New Jersey State Legislature recently introduced two bills targeting gas-powered leaf blowers. For those interested, they are Bills S4273 and A6238. We will be following the progress of the bills closely. And we are hopeful that a statewide ban is coming, which would clear up any confusion over differences in our approach versus the state's. The second reason is the ongoing stress on global supply chains across many industries. We don't want to have a ban in place this summer while local landscapers and residents might be unable to find the equipment that they need to maintain their property. Moving forward from here, we will begin committee discussions this summer about a possible return of the three-month ban for the summer of 2023 if the legislative process is stalled in Trenton. We will be sure to communicate our progress to give ample time so our local businesses can make any changes or adjustments to their operations. And we will continue to educate the public in English and Spanish about the detrimental effects of gas-powered leaf blowers and alternative equipment. And with that, Council President, I will turn it back to you to open the discussion.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselmember O'Sullivan. Are there any comments from Counselmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be quick. So we have an example of a recent ordinance, our plastic and polystyrene restriction, that was then superseded by state law. So that created confusion for business owners and consumers alike. This recommendation about a different issue with likely a similar state law outcome is a reasonable approach, I think, that demonstrates learning from the process. And I think it makes sense. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Vartan. Counselmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. As you also know, this came out of the community that I care that's a lot of time discussing this. So I just want to agree, I have a member, O'Sullivan, said, and a member, Vartan, but I just wanted to go back and say that when we implemented the ban, there were a lot of things that people were concerned about before it was implemented. One is that not enough notice was given to the land that's in place. I did, at the time, I thought that there wasn't enough, you know, the council was careful to communicate there was, this was coming. And that we did a lot of obvious surveillance. It was, but that was one of the concerns. But now, you know, we have addressed that concern by not implementing the ban again this summer, but indicating that by next summer, if the legislature hasn't acted, that we are going to be taking action. So this gives an entire year for people to start preparing for this. There was a lot of concern that it would financially impact landscapers and that people might go out of business. We didn't see that. We weren't, none of that was communicated to us. And so we don't, you know, it's our belief that that didn't really happen last summer when we implemented it. Then the communication from the public was largely positive from this ban. So in all aspects, I think it was, it was very successful. And I want to say to anyone who's disappointed that we aren't putting it in place this summer, that, you know, we saw it as a very successful pilot program. And the factors that are going into not implementing it this summer have nothing to do with the success of the program. They, they have to do with these outside factors. And then it was our intention, our strong intention to put in place going forward, if the state legislature does not act. So I wanted to just make that clear.
Thank you, Counselmember Little. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, so I, with that, we will move on to council members' comments and new business. Counselmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So three things for me. First, congratulations to the Summit High School girls swim team for their first-ever state championship. So that's exciting. Second, I am a very proud graduate of the Summit Police Youth Academy Class Number 001. So I just want to briefly echo Mayor Radist's report by saying that this is a wonderful program. And I can't recommend it highly enough for your children this summer. And then third, on a sadder note, a Summit man died by suicide last night. So if there is anyone here or who is watching at home who believes there are no other options, there are other options. If you believe there is no one to speak with, there are people to speak with. No one has to face depression alone. And the national suicide lifeline is 800-273-8255. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Vartan. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Counselmember Allen.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'd also like to say that I'm thinking of the Ukraine people and have been praying for them. I would like to thank our police chief also for the increased patrols. I've seen quite a few cars going around. I'd like to thank Aaron Trager also, who is constantly working. And really, all of the staff that gives an incredible amount of time, especially through budget season. I do want to recognize Ms. Gagnon. You said something out loud that it resonates with me. And I think as we sit here and we look at this redevelopment project, I do share your concern with overdevelopment around the state. Not speaking to our project per se. I think there are thousands of apartments going up around the state. I think there are 10,000 or 100,000 of retail square footage being built. And that is to no fault of the municipalities. When you look at, you know, you don't want to keep everything in the past. We have to make progress. We have to get to a place where that's also in context. You have to fit policy. So the state is really driving a lot of this. So it's good to make revenue and we need it. But I share your concern. And when we talk about gas leaf blowers and environment, I think that we should really be pushing, if we're going to put in thousands of apartments around the state, we should be focused on making sure these buildings are zero energy.